All right, shall we get started? We're going to start the October 3rd Select Board Meeting with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doki, doki. Minutes of manifest.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of September 19th, 2022, and the payroll manifest, September 20th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2022 as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Committees, boards and committees. Budget?
Budget, we meet next week. Planning Board, we had a meeting last Wednesday, that was about the Levin Lot subdivision on Moore's Road. And there's a bunch of other subdivisions, there's a sidewalk on Wednesday. So, they're pretty busy.
Three hundred?
Three hundred. Had the chili cook-off at the Fire Department on Saturday?
And on October 29th will be a chowder cook-off at the Fire Department. And on November 11th, at the 11th hour of the Regional Honor of the State, there will be a ceremony at one of the library honoring the veterans.
How was the chili cook-off?
It was really good.
Was it? Good.
I'm not going to tell you who's chief wife worn all the years.
What about the baseball game, Steve?
Oh, yeah, October 16th.
Oh, cool.
There's going to be an old time baseball game right here, not on the baseball field because they didn't have diamonds then, but on this field, it's a team from Durango, the Maine, and they are going to play 1860 rules and equipment. And against the Nottingham, what do you call them? Nottingham swingers.
Are you playing, Tom?
I'm on the DL.
Then you're over there.
You're on here. But I'm sitting here right now.
Pass it down.
Thank you, Tyler.
What, so wait, what's the date on that?
October 16th, it's a Sunday.
Are these all listed on the town website?
Okay, I'll put it, but this is going to be at noon.
Okay. That sounds fun.
It is fun, and again, it's a local team, and again, the amazing thing is that they're playing with the rules of 1860, which means apparently at this, I'm right, the way you got someone out was by hitting with the ball or something like that, is that true, Tyler?
I don't remember.
Well, you were there then.
I know they give.
It was a remarkable rule.
They're completely different rules than today and all that.
And they pitch underhand.
I think he was asking if you knew the rules.
Are you sure that's not cricket?
Yeah, it's cricket.
Okay.
Yeah, but again, they're wearing the actual uniforms of 1860.
That's very cool, we'll look forward to reading about it in the form.
Well, so what do you think?
Well, the recap, the one and all of that.
You can throw off the first ball if you like.
Okay, so moving on, I don't have anything on Marston, I don't know if, if you've had anything come across your way recently on Marston?
Well, the paving of the parking lot is imminent, they were grading there yesterday, I believe, and that's probably going to happen. If it's not this week, it's next.
It's next week, because they said they're supposed to try to finish paving up Flutter Street on Thursday, or finish up that this week, I think then they're going to go.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Because they're going to do that.
They want to do Marston in the beginning of the week, so it doesn't get trampled on on the weekend.
They're still going to do the other Robin Hood, whatever those over there.
Yep.
Okay, town administrator.
All right, so paving's underway, you've probably driven over a piece of something that's been chewed up, Case, Freeman Hall, Little John. Oh, no, Friar Tuck, is that the one off Case on the way to Maple Ridge is Friar Tuck? Those are all in various stages of grading, grinding, paving, that's all happening over the next week or so, no surprises on that thus far, it's all good news. The E-911 addressing changes, that effective date was last Tuesday, you haven't met since we did that, that seems to be pretty well put to bed, we had a couple of oddball, minor problems with implementation, one confusion about one driveway, but other than that, all seems to be good. One of the utility vendors entered some data wrong and we caught that, a resident told us about it, we got them to fix that today. So hopefully that is smooth for everybody that's going through it, signs are up, process is pretty well done. So hopefully that is really done, done. The last week, we were scheduled to have a public hearing on unanticipated revenues, we've been talking about that for a while, where we didn't have a meeting when it was noticed, we've got to renotice that, and we're going to do so for October 31st, if nobody objects to that, that's a regularly scheduled meeting for you, two meetings from now. You're going to start seeing budget things come fast and furious, probably with your next meeting, department heads are finalizing their pieces now, we'll talk about the calendar and all that later, but I did want to give you a heads up, I'm hearing scary numbers on health insurance, they don't tell us until mid-October, but double-digit percentage increase, probably, after years of smaller increases and even a decrease in one year a few years ago. So that's brewing, we'll know in a few weeks what the real number is. And lastly, this morning, we finally got a court order on the St. Laurent versus Nottingham case, that is the Water Cross ZBA appeal that the ZBA granted a variance months ago for the Water Cross events, some abutters appealed that decision to Superior Court, Superior Court ordered today and upheld the ZBA, so that ZBA decision will stand, there's a month in which that could be appealed or asked for a rehearing on that issue, but otherwise that case is closed and the ZBA decision will stand as is. And that's all I got for you for now.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Chris? No? Okay, action items from last meeting, so 10-3 Fire Chief is here, 10-17 Facilities Assessment Committee, I don't know that we've, unless you talk to them, I don't know that we've solidified that.
No, that was a question mark, I believe, and it's tentative. Penciled in.
Okay, and then.
What?
So we have a committee that's looking at all of the.
I know, but what are they going to be?
Well, it's on the 17th here, I personally don't know that they're ready for that date, so we'll check with them. And then roof shed for tires using ARPA funds, unanticipated revenue discussions, so.
Didn't we already approve that roof shed for the tires?
I think that was the one we.
You put that one off.
We did not approve.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So is that something we want to tackle tonight, or we want to combine it with the unanticipated revenue discussion?
Well, the ARPA money is different than what we're discussing at the hearing, so.
Yeah, I know, I was just like, putting all the money in one place.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm fine, putting it off till that.
No, any time sensitivity we need to be aware of, okay, so that meeting is the, is it the 17th, yep, we'll do that unanticipated revenue and ARPA funds for the roof shed, the tires on the 10-17 meeting as well.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10-30.
31.
10-31, apologies.
It's Halloween, I'll go.
Well, a lot of these meetings are scary anyway, Steve, so it'll work.
We'll bring candy.
Assessing, I don't think we have anything on assessing tonight, do we?
No.
Okay. It's always good. General business, Public Works Mutual Aid.
Yeah, so you got a copy of the Mutual Aid Agreement for Public Works, we never formally joined that, looks like, I didn't bring a paper copy of it, maybe you have it in your pile of stuff over there.
I have a folder with stuff.
No? All right.
You emailed it to us today, though, or yesterday?
The other day, yeah, last week.
Yeah, and.
Right today, so.
So it's really a formal agreement between the town and all of the other towns in the Mutual Aid Agreement, it outlines how and when we can ask for help or be asked for help for public works emergencies, it's, we have some informal relationships with our neighbors in place, you know, things, if we picked up the phones today, we're jammed up and need to borrow your loader for a day, can you help us out, I'm sure our neighbors would help us out, but that formal structure is good when we don't have those, or for reaching further away, kind of sets the ground rules for how those things work, would be very beneficial in a major event, you know, that was very localized, where we had troubles but our neighbors didn't, you know, because in a case of a hurricane, all of our neighbors are going to be dealing with the same kind of problems, but a tornado, we could just be dealing with it locally, so that's the purpose of that whole arrangement. Did you come across a paper version of it in one of your folders?
You know what, I don't have a folder which, my folder has the agenda only and that's it.
That's all I have. Okay, before we're done, I'll run and grab the paper copy, and do you have any questions about the concept or the document, or?
I did not.
Okay, we can come.
Does nobody have any questions?
If you're comfortable with it.
I figured you'd have done it all along.
Yeah, it's kind of the thing you think we would have done it all along, and I just realized at some point, I was at a workshop and they mentioned it, and we don't have anything on record, so.
Do you need a motion or anything?
Yeah, well, why don't we do, why don't we get the document, and later in the meeting we'll come back and do that.
Okay.
While you can.
All right, and then budget and CIP prep.
Yeah, so we've been working behind the scenes, the main thing that we need from you is a blessing of some kind of calendar, this is another document you've seen, our department heads are waiting to know when they need to be where. We don't have that from the Budget Committee yet, but it would be helpful if we could tell them what to expect and when you'd like to see them.
Have you heard anything from them?
Yeah, we have a meeting coming up on Thursday, where we're going to discuss everything on like the 6th.
Okay, because I, okay, so it's on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this is basically, yeah, I mean, the 10th right there, we're going to have a meeting on, our first official meeting, I think, is on Thursday, and that's when we're going to address everything, send everything out to the department heads, saying, listen, they should already be aware, and here's a formal date when we want something, and.
Well, Budget Committee doesn't send anything out to the department heads, do they?
They can.
Well, we probably refer to Chris, but we're going to refer somebody else to make sure that they know what's on the calendar for us, but.
Okay. Because it comes to us first.
Well, right, but again.
So that, I mean, that's what the schedule has, like them getting stuff to us by the 31st.
Yeah.
And then that gives us the opportunity to go through it before it goes to the Budget Committee, right?
Yeah, for the approval part, right.
Yeah, yeah.
But I mean, sometimes what the Budget Committee wants is something to look at beforehand, so at least, because it becomes so tight with crunch, that any information they can have before the final version gets to them, you know, it's just a.
Yeah.
Because everybody wants to look through it, go home, count things out.
Yeah, so this.
Make their marks and do everything on it.
This has, you know, like tentatively 12-1 for, 12-1, 12-8 for department heads to come into the Budget Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. All right.
Do you want, do you want to follow your column there in terms of having the department heads come to you first, or do?
You know, I.
What we typically want to do is give them, give you a shot at your department heads before you send them to the Budget Committee, that's what that calendar is trying to do. So what I need, at least from you, I know you can't speak for the Budget Committee, but I need to be able to tell them what you want from them, hopefully sooner or later.
I think we should. I think we should.
We should be on page for everything what's going on this year.
Absolutely.
With every department head.
Absolutely. Yeah, okay, so that means 10-17, 10-31, we start having them come in, okay, so we can work with you to schedule those, okay.
We should probably ask the department heads to provide us with the, you know, the official narratives on each, especially the big ticket items, so at town meeting when we're asked, we've got all the details to share with the audience.
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have to do more homework this year than we did last year in terms of being able to speak to everything that's on the budget and the Lauren articles, so, and ask good questions of them when they come in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what else related to this, Chris?
No, if you're comfortable with it, I will, you're part of it anyway, I will get to the department heads and we'll, whenever it comes out of the committee on Thursday, we'll do the same.
Okay.
What dates did you say before, the 11, 10, 11?
So, 10-17, 10-31 is when we would have them, those two meetings have them start coming in. And I mean, there shouldn't be any major surprises, because we've met with most of them at least once anyway. Okay. What else, anything else? We are ahead of schedule, oh, CIP.
Yeah, you've seen, you've seen the draft from the staff that kind of lays out that, it's the wish list version, it's, you know, this is all the things we need.
Yeah.
What do you want to do with it from there, is up to you.
So I think we're going to have to look at it as we go through the budgeting process as well, right, and make sure that it's updated, and again, we have to be prepared to have that at deliberative session this year, and be able to speak, you know, on the timing and the asks for each, everything on that. So all you have to do is leave it with us.
That can be arranged.
Traitor. Okay. What's next? Since we have both of the folks from MRI, why don't we move on to that? So let's start first with introductions of John, so John Scranton is going to be our interim TA while we're conducting this search, why don't you come down, John, and, you know, just kind of like give the board a little bit of your background and a little bit of the vision on how you see us working with you, and any asks that you might have of the board at this time.
I've been a municipal administrator for 30-plus years, I've served in communities as large as Nashua, I was city manager in Rochester for five years, but I've also served in smaller communities, I was in Barrington for eight, Farmington for five, I live about a half an hour from here, I worked in Northwood for a few months, I've been doing this, helping with the transition for the last several years since I retired, and I bring that experience and hope to be able to work with you to keep the ship sailing in the direction that it's going right now. It looks like everything's in good shape, that Chris has done a good job, and my role as I see it is to help keep the, everything moving along, looks like budget and HR are probably the two biggest issues going on right now, preparation for the annual meeting, certainly hiring a new administrator, and that's something that Mike will be speaking to here in a couple of minutes, helping with the transition of that new administrator, and perhaps working with them for a week or two as necessary to help bring them up to speed, as Chris has been doing with me, but I didn't know if you had any questions or anything I could answer for you.
Thank you for helping us out.
You're welcome.
So John will be, he will be working for, you know, a couple of weeks, and then he'll figure out, working with Kelly and the rest of the staff, if it makes sense to be on a certain, you know, specific schedule for being in the office, clearly it's important for the staff to know that he's around, that he can help, and that they can come to him with the day-to-day operational things, John, you want to talk a little bit about your preferred way of communicating with the board here?
Yes, I use email extensively, but phone calls, talk with you, willing to meet with you while I'm here, I try to make sure that if I communicate something to one select board member, all five members get the same information, I usually use Blind CC so that you can't answer, reply all, or anything and create an illegal meeting, I'm more than welcome to take your questions, if you just send them to me, as I said, my new email is TA@nottingham-nh.gov, I don't have access to it today or tomorrow, but I should have access by the end of the week, and so you can leave me a message, you can call me at home if you want, I'll be giving you my cellphone number as well as my home number. I'm retired, so I'm quite flexible on my hours, I'm not quite sure what the best hours would be, as the chair explained, I will be trying to determine that over the next two or three weeks, but I plan to be here probably three days a week in a way, if necessary, four or more, depending upon what the need is and how I think I can best help you, I also am sensitive to your budget, so I don't want to do hours unless it's necessary for me to be here, so part of this job is being available if the public or staff need the time, so I plan to make sure that I communicate what my availability will be, my plan this week is to be here Tuesday, I was here today and plan to be here Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday at this point, as far as helping with the transition.
All good?
Yeah, I got, I got one question, so given the state of the job market, it could take us a significant amount of time to find a permanent replacement for Chris, can we, can we expect to have you for the duration?
Yes, the last assignment that I just completed, it was a year that I was there, so I realize it can take some time, you need to find the right person, depending upon that person's, you know, experience, it may take shorter or longer period to help with the transition, but yeah, that's my expect, I've got an open-ended expectation here.
Okay, thank you.
Great, I mean, I'm thrilled you're here, obviously, I do think, you know, that the board, we have to be realistic, that there, you know, there are a lot of things that Chris did for us that kind of went above and beyond the normal scope of the responsibility, and, you know, plus we had him, you know, 40-plus hours, there's probably going to be some more things that we're going to have to take on ourselves, that, you know, we don't want to just hand off to John, because that's the way it's always been in the past. Thank you very much.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay, so while we're on the topic of MRI, we've also got Mike Magnet here tonight. So the, two separate issues, the interim TA, which we're all set with, also through MRI, we agree that we're going to be going through the similar hiring process that we went through for the police chief, Mike is going to be guiding us through that process, so ask him to be here tonight to just kind of review that with us, talk about it again, talk a little bit about the market, and then give you guys an opportunity to ask questions as well. So, Mike, welcome.
Thank you, good evening, so Mike Magnet from MRI, I too have a background in local government, I've been involved in local government for 40 years, I was the police chief in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I retired, and then I was the town administrator in Rye for another 10 years, I've been working with MRI since, going on 20 years now, so, I'm happy to be here, I look forward to working with you, I talked to Alan today, he apologizes for not being able to be here, so I'm going to be helping him out with the recruitment, I'll probably be your lead person, and he'll be in the background, helping us sort of review the resumes, and also grade the essay questions, and fine tune the recruitment down to hopefully three or four candidates for you. Alan did tell me he did the police chief recruitment, so you're familiar with the process, you have the contract, real quick, I'll just go over it real quick, we'll work with you, try to identify what's unique to Nottingham, we'll develop the ad copy, we'll run it by you before we place it, we'll place it in different venues. Once the, once the resumes come in, we'll review the resumes, try to cull it down a little bit, we'll send out essay questions to the candidates that we think are a good fit for the town, typically three or four essay questions, and we try to tailor them to the town, so if there's anything unique that you have going on, any challenges, could be anything, capital improvement, you could have your five-year revale coming up, I don't know, but we'll identify those, we'll grade the, grade the essay questions, and from there, like I said, we'll try to get three or four candidates in front of you, you mentioned the market, it has not been an easy market out there, so, I think Alan used the word horrible one time when I was with him, talking to a board, it's a difficult time, the pandemic, the housing market, now the economy has made it tough to recruit, people are just staying still, they don't want to move, they're a little bit nervous, but that said, we have been successful with our clients, I think there's only two or three towns that come to mind where we've kind of had to do a do-over, so to speak, that's pretty much it, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
What do you mean by like a do-over?
Where the board wasn't happy with the slate of candidates, and we had to go back out again.
That's some of the same fee, right?
Yeah, I think your contract is hourly.
We're going to, we're going to go over the contract later.
Okay.
Yeah. But that said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. One thing that Alan and I talked about is as we get closer, we can determine if we really want to go through the essay stage or not.
So that's optional, sure, if you didn't want to go through the essays, we can forego that and not do it, it does help us kind of fine tune the recruitment process, especially if there's something unique to the town, but if you don't want to do that in terms of saving money or whatever, then that's fine as well, we don't have to do that.
Okay. Why the, why the look, Ben?
What was the rationale of not doing it, was there a thought you had in mind, or?
Well, no, it was just something, depending on the pool of candidates, depending on how much money we want to spend, right? He's trying to be budget-conscious for us as well. And then the first step that you'll do is interviewing every member of the board?
Yes, the first step is we'll start to work on the ad, I'll take a look at your website, I'll talk to whoever my contact person is, I'll try to get some preliminary information from you, population, your budget, and I'll work on the ad, at the same time, I'll talk to the board of selection individually, and get a sense as to what you're looking for in your next candidate, and again, as I mentioned, get a, get an idea of what you may be facing in terms of challenges.
Okay. Questions? Is that a yes or a no?
No, it's, I got two more years on the board, I'm the young guy on the board here, so I have a lot of questions about who the next, our potential candidate might be.
He didn't mean he's the young guy.
Well.
Yeah, no.
That shirt don't look any, so.
Yeah, okay, good.
But I still got two more years, so.
Anything?
Not right now.
What do you want, Steve? What do you want, Steve?
Would you, I asked the board, do you want any community input into that selection or just our board?
Yeah, we're going to have to talk about that process, we can talk about that process with you guys about how we want that particular.
Sure, every town's different. Some towns want a lot of community input, other towns basically some, just go with the Board of Selectmen. Sometimes they might invite a member of the Budget Committee or the Conservation Committee.
Yep.
Or somebody in particular in town to sit in on the, on the, on the interviews. But that, that'll, that's up to you, that's a policy decision that you'll have to make.
Okay. All good? All right, Mike, thanks for coming in, appreciate it, and we look forward to getting going on this.
Will you be my contact person?
Yeah, unless anybody has any objections to that.
Great.
I didn't hear first.
I'll leave a business card with Chris.
We know, we know where to find you.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. You might see me at that baseball game, it sounds like fun.
Okay, Jay, are you all set, Jay? I mean, we're way early.
Yes.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't know if anybody else was coming with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jay Vilchuk, Chief Nottingham Fire Rescue. It's a pleasure to be here this evening, how is everybody?
The standings.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. There we go. I just, I gave a handout just to show you where we're at in terms of pace. The first, first page shows our call volume through thirty September for the calendar year compared to the last ten years or so. Second page gives the total runs for the entire calendar year through twenty-one, from oh-nine to twenty-one, you've seen this slide before. The only thing that's updated is the extrapolation of where we're at, and that's dangerous. Extrapolating where we're at, the thirty September, four hundred and sixty-five, if you extrapolate, it looks like it was somewhere around six-twenty, but it doesn't have to be linear, folks, we all know that, so. That's just, just a snapshot. And the last page is just some more eye wash regarding fuel usage, because that's one of the hard spots. I know I'm probably not the only department that worries about fuel, I think highway and police use fuels. So there's some data there on what our, what our fuel usage is through the years, so that's that. So I'd like to start off by thanking the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator for the support their fire department during a busy year, especially in the last month, the month of August, not the last month or so. We had a, we had a busy month of August with so many incidents and some of the three hundred events, okay? Also, I want to thank you for your road decision, that was for Chris and the Board of Selectmen for implementing those changes and supporting those changes. I think that's going to be a huge improvement to safety for the residents in those area. I could start off by saying some of the issues, challenges with the fire department is recruitment and retention of our career staff. After a turbulent start of trying to get the six full-time equivalents, I've got, as of today, I have two full-time staff on board. I have two offers, I'm meeting with the one gentleman later in this week who has an offer letter with them. And the other offer probably won't be filled till the beginning of January, because the gentleman that, that I extended that to is finishing up his other career, and he wants to finish the calendar year before he transitions. I have two, then I have two slots out, open, that makes four. For additional, I have at least seven resumes in hand right now for those two slots. I have three interviews starting this week scheduled, starting tomorrow, with three of those seven. There's also two, two potential additional resumes for those other slots. So I, I've gone from rags to riches in terms of resumes and folks that are interested in, in the position, so we'll see where that goes.
So the one, the, the one that you have an offer to who's not waiting till January?
Yes.
Do you anticipate he's going to accept that offer?
I, I, right now I'll give a fifty-fifty, okay? Later communication says he's being entertained by a couple other departments also.
Okay.
So we'll see where this goes later in the week when I meet with him, okay? So there's certainly enough float here in the, in the pool here that I should be able to snag, we'll see, okay? And I don't want to waste any time on interviews here, because they tend to get picked up rather quickly. This was all fallout from the last CPAT. The last CPAT for the calendar year, the physical agility test, was I think the nineteenth of September. And I guess some, some timely re-advertising and communication worked and a lot of word-of-mouth communication I've found out may help us through this. A little later than I originally anticipated, I started out a little earlier, but that one kind of didn't work out quite right. So we are where we're at. And I know the board is sensitized to this about pay, pay is, pay is important to keep, to retain our important, our, our good people. And it's something I think we need to concentrate more on in the future, so that's that. For the remainder of fiscal year twenty-two, some of the budget concerns that I have, fuel, fuel's one of the concerns about, about. When I, when I entered this year, based on my sixteen years of being in chief, I had a twenty-five percent float in my fuel line, because I know fuel goes all over the place. If I look at where I am today, I'm estimating I'm going to be twenty-five percent over, so, for my fuel expenditures this year. Like I said, I'm not the only department, it's probably come to you with that, I hope not. It affects us all in our daily lives. I'd ask that the, the board maybe, I will ask, is there, is there a position that the board has come to for these, you know, these, these shortages, you know, funding-wise for fuel in this year's budget? Are we going to take it out of hide, is there anything going to happen there, or should I just anticipate?
We have to cover a day.
I understand that, but are we going to have to take it out of our operating budget, or is there some other kind of, you know, are we just going to take it from another line, we're going to do the bottom-line trick, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to do the bottom line.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And also, I.
I mean, I say that, does anybody disagree with me?
Until we see it all on paper.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I also make a recommendation that maybe, maybe there'd be a standardization for this budget cycle for what every department's using for anticipated cost.
Yep.
And what that, what that float's going to be for next year, just in case, because I don't think we're done with the five, six-dollar fuel yet, to be honest with you.
Now, we, I talked with John about that today, so yes, we will provide guidance on that.
So that we're standard and we're not inventing it all individually here?
Exactly.
Okay, message delivered, okay. Other concerns, overall inflation, like everybody else, inflation, supply, supplies. The supply chain issues have affected us throughout the year, the cost of doing business with supplies, especially at the tail end of the, how do I describe this? At, it's not tail end, because it's still going on, COVID, the COVID, the wild fluctuation in pricing in one direction, okay? That, you know, the, the operating items, operating space items, the consumables that we use, prices increased, you know. I don't want to put a number on it, but, you know, they've been all over the map on there, so it's hard to budget for that, okay? Supply chain issues, some of the, some of the vendors that we dealt with in the past have, have left the market, okay? Especially in the service area, which forced us, forced us in the last year to change our, you've heard this last budget cycle, our, our software provider for Enford's fire reporting system, we had to change that strategy. Our, our compressor, SCBA compressor maintenance company went out of business, so we had to enter a new agreement with another company for, for our, our maintenance and testing of our breathing app, breathing air, okay, our compressor for SCBAs. So it's all been a challenge. Vehicles, there's been some surprises in maintenance in the vehicle line that you'll be seeing. The one I talked about earlier was the forestry that had twenty-three thousand mile Ford, that had to have a head gasket job on it, okay? That was unanticipated, about an eight, nine thousand dollar expense in that area for, it's a two thousand and five. But the thing certainly has not reached its end of life, but that was a, that was a bit of a surprise.
Just to add on that, though, that, that particular model has a six-oh diesel?
Yes.
And they're notorious for head gaskets.
This is true.
So it doesn't matter what mileage it is, it's the age of the vehicle, you're going to start running into head gaskets. Chief already discovered that.
And it's been corrected and it's, it's fine, it's good for, I'm not a crystal ball.
It's good until it breaks again.
Right. Ford built rough. Engine two, engine two had some, had anticipated, just regular cost to do in business. Not a brake issue, but some maintenance had to do with the rear brake seat through the inspection cycle. That's a ten-year-old truck. Tanker, the tanker, which I said everything else depends on a tanker, had some piping and some, some pump and valve issues that were discovered during, during the pump testing that had to be corrected. So there were some corrective maintenance that obviously I couldn't plan for. But all that maintenance has been completed, the majority of, of the major corrective maintenance has been corrected. I've got one small issue with the forestry that's going to, it needs to be, it's scheduled to be repaired. Again, that's since two thousand, that's two thousand and eight, that pump unit. That's a surprise, I'm waiting on the billing, so I don't know what the impact is. All the, all the, all the necessary state-required inspections, safety inspections have been completed. The oil changes, lubrications, which we do annually, you say that's not a big deal, but it costs hundreds of dollars on it, on these trucks to have the oil changed because of the capacities, okay? Pump testing, ladder testing, hose testing, all the mandatory annual testings have been completed, sat, so we got them behind us. And that's all, that's all a, a third quarter expense, so any of the budget numbers that you've seen up to this point, you know, they're not going to be true yet, so, okay. Shortfalls are being managed by other budget lines, that's why I asked that. Some of the funding's being fenced in the other budget lines to cover the shortages, anticipated deficits in areas such as vehicle maintenance. The Forest Fire slash Wildland Line was overspent by about a thousand dollars, I believe, but we expect to, and I'll get into that later, to see a return of, of half of that. That was based on the Rocky Ridge Fire in August, so. Protective gear and vaccinations and testing are in other lines that are probably going to hit pretty hard this year. But there, there are funds in other lines that I have, and I don't know, I'm not going to go in detail at this meeting, that I've, I've fenced that, to cover those, those deficits. So we should have a conversation before we make any decisions on the twenty-three budget, based on what the actuals are for twenty-twenty-two.
Yep.
Because you may not know what the, why, why was one line so grossly underspent, okay?
Yep.
That's, that's where I'm going with that.
Yep.
Budgeting one-on-one, okay. CIP, for twenty-twenty-three, I don't have any major. There is a hundred K request for a capital reserve fund, to recharge the capital reserve fund, our, our apparatus in SCBA line. There are also some, some station maintenance items that were in there, and I'll get into more detail about them a little bit later. I don't know, CIP is pretty, pretty benign right now, okay? Next major apparatus I, I see out here is replacing an ambulance again out in twenty-twenty-eight. Maybe we'll get our twenty-twenty-two by then, okay? But twenty-twenty-eight, and again, that comes out of, hopefully still comes out of the, the special revenue fund. As far as big pieces of apparatus, I still hold by twenty-twenty-nine will be, unless Tank One has a catastrophic, Tank One's a two thousand and three, a catastrophic, catastrophic failure, I'm hoping to push Tank One out as long as possible. And twenty-twenty-nine will be the next planned replacement of a big piece of apparatus. We'd probably be looking at that estimate there. I took the two thousand and, two thousand and nineteen number and added fifty percent to it, so we'll see where we're at in two thousand and twenty-nine. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Was it twenty, twenty-nine, is that a fact?
Negative, it's to be determined.
Oh, okay.
To be determined, based on needs, okay? Yes, that's not, has not been identified, okay? Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to ask the board here if you consider, let's see, investing some of the ARPA funds for these, maybe possibly some of these upkeep, upkeep items that I've listed in the CIP. The, the bay door safety enhancement there, since the station was built, we'll be there fifteen years in November, there was no safety mechanism on the overhead doors in the bays, it was built without them, and we've had two instances in one, in one near miss. The last one was damaged to the forestry, ended up taking a windshield out. There's no reversal mechanism, no sensors on those doors, they're dangerous, okay? I think it's time to invest in it, we've been warned three times before something seriously happens, okay? Maybe you want to invest ARPA and save the taxpayers some funding there, okay? Additionally, some of the other CIP items, maybe you want to think about investing ARPA in, like replacement of our portable radios, the base radio, things in the CIP I have out there in the, in the out-years, maybe, maybe some of that money could be reinvested in, into, into, into those items, I can provide more and estimates. The numbers on, on the CIP are going to need to be revised, they're a little bit on the light side. I've got, since then, I've gotten some better, better estimates and quotes, okay? Again, I bring this up especially to state, station maintenance items, like the doors, like the floors, like possibly the parking lot being seal-coated and/or repaired before we end up getting holes in there. I think there's some, some maintenance issues that need to be, should be addressed, okay, to keep it, keep it fresh, okay? That sort of stuff. Gutters cleaned, that sort of stuff. Erosion parking lot, a lot of these items I have discussed with that, we don't call them facilities, you call them buildings committee. The Buildings Committee, they came and met with me, they have an idea what some of these items were, okay? I want to thank Chris, this is going to be a lot, thank Chris for spearheading that Gopher grant. I don't know if you were aware of the Gopher grant that went through, I think you've heard of it in the past. But the fire department received thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seven cents, and it only, okay, out of forty-four thousand dollars worth of purchases, it cost us seven thousand dollars. These were purchases for the new ambulance. We received the new Lucas, which is a CPR compression device, and also it paid for the, the power loader, which is an automatic system that loads the stretcher, you don't have to pick it up physically anymore. The stretcher comes out and the wheels drop down if we ever get the ambulance, okay, it'll be in there, okay? I want to, I want to thank Betsy Warrington and Susan Bascom, the treasurer, correct? For working on the certification requirements for, for the reimbursement for the Rocky Ridge Fire. The state reimburses fifty percent for the cost of that fire, and they have some tedious certification, you have to sign every bill to certify that the bill's been paid. And Betsy spearheaded that with, with the treasurer and got it back to me, and the ranger picked it up on Friday. There was a sixty-day window and there was a hard date to turn that stuff in, so.
What was the cost and what was the amount reimbursed?
Twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred dollars, roughly, it was twenty-seven ninety-seven, and you get fifty percent back. So we'll be seeing about fourteen. So we'll be seeing about fourteen hundred dollars back, and if we can get that back in our budget, that would be good.
Look at me.
Okay, I'm okay.
We'll figure it out.
Back in our budget, okay? Thank you.
You want us to just write you a check tonight, Jay?
Negative, no, maybe by the end of the year might work, but okay, I don't take checks, so.
You got your little uh.
Cash cash card, yeah? Yeah. Good news, good news, uh good news. Ambulance two, which was approved last year, was ordered on or about sixteen April. Still don't have a VIN, uh that's the bad news. The good news is it was identified as number fourteenth in their production schedule last month and hasn't been refreshed since then. That's that's a little, that's a little shaky, okay? I know they put out some ambulances in the last month, okay? So the date is suspect.
What's the chassis?
Uh Ram, Cummins, I mean, wrapped in a Ram, yep. Uh number fourteen, chassis, no VIN, that's that's part of the news there, so. Uh part of the bad news is it is going to be a twenty-three, it's not a twenty-two, and there's an eight thousand dollar upcharge for that chassis. And I initiated the conversation, I thought we had a signed purchase order or whatever agreement here, so why do we get charged eight thousand? But I don't I don't think I'm the first person to experience this in this department wide, okay? I think there might have been other departments that may have had that problem with receiving equipment, okay? That's where we're at. I don't have a date on when that ambulance is going to be delivered and or even VIN, but it's number fourteen, as I was told. Uh ambulance equipment that's that's on order for there, there's a new defibrillator, stair chair, cot, and two of the radio systems have been ordered so far, and that's about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of equipment that was ordered out of there, and the majority of that, if not all, are coming out of the McLean Trust Fund, which was turned over to us for that purpose. So that's that's not coming from the taxpayers, okay? As far as twenty-twenty-three budget, and we'll be talking more, you know, my concerns again are with fuel, inflation, and salary lines again. Uh I'm going to be going for full staffing, okay, because I'm going to fill fill the six positions and move migrate us to the twenty-four sevens. Okay. Lastly, before you can ask me any questions, I want to thank Chris for the uh super job he's done over the past, how many years, Chris?
Eight.
Eight years or so for supporting the fire department, asking me the hard questions, okay? And uh just all around, sad to see you go, and I thank you for uh for all you did for the fire department, okay? And for the town of Nott again, Chris, okay?
Questions, guys?
Yeah, the additional eight thousand on the ambulance is the that fund, whether it's a McLean fund?
McLean and or the three hundred thousand, I think we have room to be able to absorb it at this time. I'm I'm pretty, I haven't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not raising any alarms at this point.
And just out of curiosity, I mean, any public safety building that has fire apparatus or 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 anything like that, why there wasn't any safety mechanism put on those doors? It's my understanding the highway department has them on their doors, right? Why doesn't?
Probably probably cost, okay, probably, I don't know, I'm guessing like you, okay? I know, we didn't have them, there are no reverses.
Fifteen years? It's a safety issue, I get it, but this should have been addressed a long time ago.
What is the cost of if we did that, I mean, you know, around?
I I I put eleven in here, I think it's going to be closer than twenty, and I'm guessing again, I look at the estimates. I got an estimate from uh from a door manufacturer, also an electrician, because the door manufacturers, there's some other stuff. The system that I'm looking at is twofold, it's not only a pressure uh pressure switch air system on the bottom of the door, so if it makes contact, it reverses, but also the optical device, so if there is a piece of apparatus in the path going through the door, it won't won't close or reverse that. And there's also another, there's some enhancements here also. Currently, we use these uh, we use remotes to open and close the doors from the radio room when there's a call. And I believe, Chris, were you there, did you close the door for me recently? You saw it in action when I was going out for an ambulance, that it's not reliable, we want to replace those uh want to replace those switches with hardwire switches, okay? Uh so when you walk out the door, you can open and close them like like the kind that are at the bays themselves. Uh otherwise, you know, those 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 remotes are not, they're not the highest quality, I'm going to tell you right now, okay? They're there for fifteen years, the battery life on them, uh some of them stick. I'm looking at replacing the remotes also, so we're trying to take care of a couple of those things. And and again, the twenty K is is just uh, that's that's a guess now, I got the real numbers, okay? But the the door, the door company won't do the wiring, and I have to get an electrician, I got an estimate from an electrician to do the wiring, to to do the the switch mod. And part of this, the electrician's cost, I think, go up because he has to rent a, it's high. He's got to rent a lift to get up there to do the work around there, so that's included in that cost, so. Luckily, in those three years, we've had, you know, two incidents, one cost money, one dented the door, and the third one was a near miss where somebody was there physically by the switch and able to stop it.
Okay, no other questions for Jay? Thank you for coming in, Chief.
My pleasure, you're very welcome, that was.
Painless, cool.
Thanks, Chief.
Um Chris, when will we see, or John, when will we see um financials updated, so that we can kind of see where we are?
Uh you could see September thirty numbers at your next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that's painless, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
With all the numbers up to date to that.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about too, like even if there's stuff that's outstanding that hasn't hit us yet. We can kind of like project out that, so we can see where we are.
Yeah, overall, I think you're you've you've got a lot of flexibility, so you're you don't have to worry uh generally, but there are a lot of lines that are way off.
Yeah.
The sum total will be okay, but um.
Yeah, okay. And then, John, I think one thing that we'll have to kind of have a discussion about at some point is the use of the ARPA funds.
Yes.
Right? And kind of like, you know, certainly what Jay just proposed, in my mind, is is good, excuse me, use of it, but we want to make sure we're looking at the big, the entire picture, right, of how those funds are going to be used.
How much have we used so far?
Seventy.
Yeah, not not.
That was um.
Eighty, something like that, yeah, out of five hundred.
Yeah.
That was the well and?
Yeah, that's almost all the water at Marston.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we've got a, we've got enough to spend, um we just want to make sure that we're prioritizing and using it the right way. Um that covers the agenda, anything else?
Do we have anything for non-public?
We do have non-public.
We should uh.
Do I have a question?
There you go.
Kathy Cinco, I live at twenty-three Little River Road, and I put in a taxpayer right to know law question. And Mr. Moore was going to get answers for me, so I want to find out if the metal in the trash that was buried at the pit were cleaned up.
So for the conversation, I went on Friday morning, and I actually met Sean at the the town pit. There is no metal that's been buried by him or by anybody in our, his department. So there's nothing there.
Okay.
Um as for, you asked about glass.
And the stumps, yep.
Right. Uh there are some stumps buried in there, uh but there is no, you know, again, law about the the stumps. But it isn't, we don't have enough to be like a a stump farm. So um and towards glass, we don't no longer do the practice of putting glass there. We have been putting glass there for probably over twenty years um beforehand. But under Sean's time of being there, again, we've obviously stopped doing that, and now we're bringing it up to Rochester and dumping it. And then you had another, so that, so there is no more, I mean. Uh because even though it's the old highway department manager who was putting the glass that was there years ago, you know, but the quantity's become a lot.
They bury it though? Did he bury it?
Uh he didn't know exactly what Johnny did with all of it, because he was, you know, he only had his time with them, so. You know, he didn't go investigating every corner of that lot, looking for it, so, but I'm sure there's spots around where it's there. As towards Phil, he will get a number for us, uh because they weren't finished with the exact number, uh going to Deerfield Sand and Gravel. He showed me the material we're giving to Deerfield Sand and Gravel. It is basically filled with rocks, clay, um dirt. It's material, basically you would call it fill. Uh there's no use to the town at all for it, but they have a fill, use it for, uh because they supply it to a lot of contractors that are building houses, they need to fill around the side of their foundations, and it's cheap. Uh but they need a large volume of it, so that's why they're taking it from there. And what we're getting a return from them is that we get all our sand screened and ready so that it's available to be used in our trucks. So there's no stones, and if you go, if you were in there, you'd see three buildings, you should see this gigantic, I mean, it's it's huge, the pile that they filtered and sanded for us for this year. Well, we're going to take some of that, we mix it with our salt, and then they're going to, because we're redoing the tops, it's waiting to go into the next bay once they redo the top, so it stays protected for this year. But he's going to have a number, when I get that number, for what we bargained or traded for, I'm going to let you know exactly what that is.
You will email me?
I probably will email you instead of you coming here to address it.
Okay.
I will get that information for you, since Chris probably won't be here by then.
And meanwhile, there's no record, there's no paper trail, there's no
Of.
certification that this has been traded, bartered.
Well, he's going to give you the numbers that what he's traded for, how much sand we have, that was filtered, it's, you know, that we're going to use.
Right, but I mean to the general public.
And he's going to give me the final ones. Well, I'm going to give you that number, well, if the general public asks, we're going to have it, it's just, I mean, if you want it, I'm going, I want to provide it for you.
Do you want it, yes.
Yeah, but it's just something, we don't post it on our our website just to say, hey, I mean, there's a lot of stuff.
Oh, but there should be a trade, paper trail.
Sure, yeah.
We made this agreement with.
Maybe it should be something added to the town report at the end of the year.
Maybe.
Again, something I'll look into for you.
All right, thank you.
And get it done. But again, I was told there's absolutely no metal at all that was ever buried in there, so that is, and that was all brought to Hardings and everything like that.
What about the other trash? You saw the pictures, did you see the pictures?
No.
There was quite a bit of trash there.
Well, a lot of stuff was brought, but it was all filtered and gone, and like, we didn't take any trash that was.
No, this this is not the stuff that the the people picked up, they had dumpsters and stuff for that.
Right.
This is the stuff that the town crew cleaned out of the woods and wherever there, all those stumps and.
Well, I drove around the thing for what I could see, because I went up to the, see where the dirt is, and then I drove down to where we, I did the loop to where we had the three hundredth uh bonfire uh over there. Um and, I mean, just, you know, all the nails to the pallets that were in there, they're in the ground. So we have to figure out something better for that next year if we have that fire again, because that's not a a practice we're going to want to keep. Uh if that's going to be a concern for people in town, you know, but uh and I did a quick loop around just because I was in there.
If it's buried, you're not going to see it, right?
Well, you can tell what's been dug and what's not been dug or buried. You know, you can see where the grass, because there's a lot of grass and fields that are growing back there from land that we haven't touched. Right. Again, he said there's no trash buried, I have to take his word for it, he's there. That's the best I can say, that there is no trash that's in there, and again, the glass situation, there's glass spread all over the place out there. You know, it's a practice we're not doing anymore.
Well, plus Johnny was going to use it for Phil and stuff.
Right.
In the roads, but it has to be really ground to be in the roads.
And that was probably a good foresight of him to, you know, I'm not, again, love Johnny Depp, but that was a foresight, he says, well, I'm going to use that later on. So he was putting it there as a a stockpile.
Right.
But he never got to it, so then it's just, it's just there. So again, that's why now we're just taking it all and getting rid of it.
Okay.
All right, but when I get that number, I will give it to you, so you can see what we did, and how much they took, and how much we got for our actual load amount of sand for the town for this year for the highway.
Where was this, what did we have this exchange with?
Uh Deerfield Sand and Gravel.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Hold on.
A.
I'll make a motion that we enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two A.
Second.
Go call.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, Ben Breil.
All right.